Welcome to Woodstock City Council. It is Thursday, November the 4th, 2021. This meeting is being held electronically in accordance with Section 238, subsection 3.3 of the Municipal Act, and Section 16.6.24 of the City of Woodstock procedural bylaw. The meeting is being livestreamed on the city's YouTube channel, and a recording will be posted on the city's website following the meeting. The meeting will also be broadcast on Rogers TV. An agenda of the meeting can be found on the Agendas, Meetings, and Minutes page of the city's website. Councillors will be raising their hands in view of their webcam when moving a motion, requesting to speak, and when a vote is being taken. If a member of council is disconnected or having technical difficulties, we will take a recess in order to attempt to rectify the issue. If technical difficulties exist that prevent the meeting from continuing, the meeting will be adjourned and reconvened at a later time. If a councillor needs to leave the meeting at any time, they're requested to inform the clerk. And with that, I would ask all of the councillors to turn on their webcams. Welcome, everyone. And we have quite a full agenda today, so we'll get right to work here. And we'll start off any disclosures of conflict of interest. And seeing none, disclosures of new business? Or matters arising from the minutes? Then we'll get right down to the minutes from the October 21st, 2021 regular council meeting. Councillor Lauter?
Thank you. I move by myself, second by councillor Talbot, that the minutes of the regular meeting of the Woodstock City Council held on October 21st, 2021 be adopted.
Thank you. You've heard the motion. Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. And we have additions to the agenda today. Councillor Lauter?
Thank you. I move that the following items, I move by myself and councillor, second by councillor Tate, that the following items be added to the agenda. Department Report A3 Employee Computer Purchase Program, Bylaw 950221, a bylaw to amend the City of Woodstock Municipal Code, Chapter 93, Clerk Deputy Appointment.
Thank you. You've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries. We have no presentations today. So we'll get to delegations. And today we're joined by the Chair from the Southgate Centre regarding update on their programming and future plans. We have with us the Woodstock Senior of the Year, as approved by the Province of Ontario, David Hilterley. And I know that councillor Lauter is also anxious. She's attended her first meeting regarding the capital campaign as well. So, welcome. Thank you very much, Mayor Birch, members of council, and staff. Much has happened since we last presented to city council, and we are very happy to be here today to give you a brief overview of the last year and a half. In March 2020, when COVID locked the country down, Southgate Centre quickly responded to the needs of seniors in our community. While the building and programming were shut down, we saw an opportunity to reinvent ourselves. We took the challenges and turned them into remarkable opportunities to serve our community better, all while strengthening our business. Local Roots, Southgate's food services, was something that seniors depended on weekly for well-balanced, affordable meals. This became a priority to maintain. With indoor dining closed, we hired summer students to help us build an online and phone-in meal program. We created curbside pickup for lunches, frozen foods, and special Saturday dinners. In an attempt to not only keep seniors well-fed, we needed to keep them safe. A free delivery service of meals was introduced, powered by volunteers. This summer, our food services evolved once again, introducing Local Roots Patio, outdoor dining on our patio. It was another great success feeding the community. All of those efforts of Local Roots have paid off. Last night, at the Woodstock Chamber of Commerce Awards of Excellence, Local Roots, Southgate Centre, won the Outstanding Food Services Award. We are humbled and very honoured to be recognised by our community with this award. Isolation and the lack of socialisation for seniors is a difficult combination. We have worked hard to keep seniors in our community connected and safe. For the first time ever, we introduced a new portfolio of free programs that could be accessed from home. We continued to pivot through this entire time, keeping Woodstock seniors safe, connected, loved, and informed. We've slowly inched our way back to limited programming, and just last week opened our programs back to a drop-in style, and are welcoming new members for the remainder of the year. Through the tough COVID times, what was confirmed was how vital Southgate Centre is to our seniors, physically, emotionally, socially, and mentally. Southgate Centre will continue to be adaptive, safe, and agile, meeting the ever-changing needs of our seniors, recreation in our community. Our future is looking bright. With approximately 50% of our expansion fundraising commitment in hand, we are anxious to get moving on the remaining balance. We are pleased that city staff is reviewing the new entrance driveway and parking lot in preparation for the Southgate Centre expansion. We greatly appreciate city staff and council support in moving forward with this expansion. Now we are ready to move on to our next steps. We have engaged Signify Design to produce our campaign promotional materials in preparation for our asks to the community. We have a prospects team ready to identify potential donors and are anxious to begin contacting them for their support. We are incredibly proud of all that we have accomplished at Southgate Centre and are grateful to everyone who has helped power our mission. We're excited for the future, working together, making Woodstock the best place to grow. Thank you. Questions of council? Councillor Lauter?
Thank you. No questions, but I just wanted to thank David for this update at Southgate. And I want to especially congratulate Local Roots for winning the Food Service Award. Last evening, I listened to all of it, and it's quite exciting when they were chosen. And I commend the staff at Southgate for the excellent job they have done in keeping the operation going throughout COVID. And I am pleased to be part of this new board at Southgate. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions of council? Councillor Talbot?
Thank you, worship. Not a question. Just want to thank Mr. Hilterley for coming forth. It's always great when you come willingly and keeping us up to date because it's, it helps us in making decisions and going forward. So I personally appreciate all the information I can get, and it's presentations like this that help us stay on top of things. So thank you. And congratulations on the award. That's pretty exciting and lots to be proud of.
Yes, we do.
I wonder which particular piece it was on the menu that made you the winner? Because I know you, I've had a few of them, and they're pretty tasty.
They are all tasty, that's for sure. Anywhere from roast beef to liver and onions, if you can believe it, so.
You see, and that's one of my favourites.
Thank you. Councillor Schattenberg?
Yeah, thanks off from the mayor through Mr. Hilterley. I guess maybe the quick calls notes, David, on what Southgate's all about, only because we have so many new residents to the, to the City of Woodstock, Old Wellington Street, South. And just a quick calls notes as to what the associations are all about.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Schattenberg. In addition to the food services that we offer, we offer a wider variety of recreational activities for our seniors. Anywhere from line dancing to exercise classes, billiards, card playing, all kinds of interesting activities and programs that we do offer. And anyone new to Woodstock, if you want to visit our Southgate Centre website, you'll find a great list of all of the activities that are available there. Thank you. Further questions of council? Councillor Accioni?
Thank you. Worship, just more of a comment as well. David, of course, always appreciated everything you do here in the community. Congratulations on a personal level as well as Southgate Centre, of course. And it's amazing, I believe Heart of M already put something out today just about the bingo coming back to Southgate Centre, put on by the Lions Club, I might throw it there. But it's amazing how many people are excited about that as well. So I'm really glad to see things getting going again, getting, being in the building the other night for the first time in a while. So just congratulate all the staff, and thanks for everything they've done to adapt.
Thank you very much. It is great to have community partners back in the building again. And if I can put in a little plug for our 12 Days of Christmas lottery, that will start on November 12th. So hopefully you'll get your tickets at that point in time. Thank you.
Always do. Take care.
Thank you. And councillor Petter?
Through the mayor to David, thanks for your presentation, David. I think what we really want to know is, it's only been a few days, but what's it like having Patrice home? That's what we're really interested in.
Well, it's been wonderful. I will tell you that. And she's relaxed and enjoying it. And thanks for asking. Thank you. I think that's almost everybody. Councillor Tate, anything to add?
Through your worship, just if Mr. Hilli can confirm that senior age is 55, correct, and the amount of a membership?
Actually, we're active adults 50 plus, councillor Tate. And I am sorry to say, I don't know the exact amount of the membership. I apologize for that.
No, that's good. I just want everybody to be aware that it's quite a young age you can join. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. And we'll move along. Our next delegation, we have, of course, a campaign coming up here in the friendly city. This is for the Zonta Club of Woodstock, and it's about the Wrapped in Courage campaign. And today we're joined by Rublin Smith. Welcome.
Good afternoon, your worship, Mayor Birch and city councillors. My name is Rublin Smith, and I am a member of the Zonta Club of Woodstock and Zonta International, an organisation of professional women empowering women globally and locally through service and advocacy. With me this afternoon is Samantha White, Communications Manager for the Domestic Abuse Services of Oxford. We are here to represent the Domestic Assault Resource Team of Oxford, or what we call DART. DART agencies are the first responders to violent acts in our county. Violence against women and girls is one of the most pervasive human rights violations and a global tragedy. It knows no national or cultural barriers. It takes place at home, in the workplace, and in any open spaces, and it affects millions of women and girls in peacetime and conflict. It includes psychological, physical, and sexual violence, as well as human trafficking. Violence against women and girls threatens countries, inhibits economic progress, and prevents women from contributing to their community and creating better lives for themselves and their families. Zonta and DART have been working in partnership on the Global Zonta Says No campaign and our provincial Wrapped in Courage campaign for the past eight years during the 16 Days of Activism Against Gender-Based Violence. Before COVID, Zonta distributed 2,600 orange ribbons and 500 cookies to community partners, 600 healthy relationship grab bags in high school students, and 12 three-feet Christmas trees decorated in orange ribbons were displayed in city locations and local businesses. Throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, instances of gender-based violence have risen. Now, more than ever, it is essential that we work together to end violence against women and girls. Our campaign would like to bring awareness to this issue and advocate on behalf of gender-based violence survivors.
As Rublin mentioned, my name is Samantha, and I'm the Communications Manager at DASSO. And I am also a leader for the Wrapped in Courage campaign to end gender-based violence in Oxford County. November is Women Abuse Prevention Month, and while Zonta displays orange to raise awareness about the realities of violence against women, shelters and advocates across Ontario have been wearing purple scarves to signify support for survivors of gender-based violence. The purple scarf is a symbol of the courage it takes a woman to leave her abuser. However, the courage of the woman is not enough. It takes the support of an entire community to end violence against women. Gender-based violence is often an invisible issue, and many women and gender diverse individuals may not be aware of the services that are available in their community. Together with the Zonta Says No campaign, DART seeks your support in raising awareness of the realities of gender-based violence by bringing our campaign signifiers to the great symbols of Oxford County. Rublin and I see the value in partnering with the City of Woodstock to raise awareness of the resources and supports available to women in the friendly city and Oxford County. With the mayor's permission, we would like to bring our campaign colours, orange and purple, to the Snow Countess and Leilie Cow, and we seek your guidance on how to do so. One suggestion for the location of Leilie was to be the corner of Huron Street and Dundas Street for maximum awareness and traffic. We propose the campaign colours to remain in place from November 25th to December 10th to coincide with the 16 Days of Activism. However, we're open to suggestions from the mayor and city council. Our goal is to create awareness in a safe and supportive manner. We welcome any suggestions that the mayor and Woodstock City Council may have in promoting both campaigns while honouring Woodstock's rural roots. Together, we want to thank you for your time today, and we welcome any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Questions of council? All right. We will get right along then to the consideration of delegations. So thank you very much. And there will be a lot more information coming out in the community about your campaign. And we'll definitely work with you to make sure that everything goes well with the locations. And there we are. So the first one is for the Southgate Centre presentation. Do I have a mover in a second or so? We'll go with councillor Lauter, second by councillor Petter. Go ahead, councillor Lauter.
Thank you. I'll move that Woodstock City Council receive the update from the Southgate Centre Board of Directors as information.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favour? And carries unanimous. And I'm sure we'll hear a little more information as we get into the long-term capital plan regarding that expansion. So the next one is for DASSO and Zonta on the Wrapped in Courage. So we'll go with councillor Tate and councillor Talbot.
I'll move that Woodstock City Council approve the request from the Zonta Club of Woodstock and the Oxford Domestic Assault Resource Team to utilise the Snowbank Snow Countess in consultation with the Parks Department, city property for the cow, for the campaign to raise awareness of gender-based violence from November 25th until December 10th, 2021.
Thank you. Discussion? We'll go with councillor Tate first.
Just to comment, maybe if there's something else we can do to highlight some other area, maybe Brad Janson or one of our other staff can get in touch with Zonta, because there could be other ideas they come up with and a little bit more awareness during the 16 days that they mentioned would be helpful. I know the police station lights up in purple, but there may be more that we could do for them too.
Very good point. And we will be having the flag raising, I believe, at our original city hall, the museum. Councillor Schattenberg?
Yeah, thanks from the mayor through to the delegation. The Leilie Cow, would they be a corporate sponsor for the, for this event, being that they're out in the Tulare Ridge in the, in the City of Woodstock? So there's obviously, therefore for them anyway, a local connection to them. And of course, the Dairy Capital of Canada. You receive sponsorship money from, from them? I guess that's the question.
Okay, that may have been better received during the delegation's presentation rather than during the motion. But if either Rublin or Samantha would like to answer that, that would, I think that'd be fine with council's indulgence. Okay.
Your worship through to the councillor, can you repeat the question, please?
Yeah, sure thing. I see that you, Leilie Cow was as part of the sponsorship for this event. And just curious if, because they've got a location of Woodstock, got on the Tulare Ridge, if there is sort of a financial sponsor, financial backer to assist in your, in your programming?
No, not to my knowledge.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favour? And carries. And thank you for what you're doing to raise awareness. And I'm sure the community will be looking at adding some support as well. So thank you very much. And we'll move right along. So next up, we have correspondence. And we'll have regarding the rent evictions. And this is something that's been affecting a lot of communities, including our own. And so thank you to the City of Sarnia, and we'll go with councillor Lauter. And if we have a second or on that correspondence, councillor Tate, thank you.
Thank you. I'll move that Woodstock City Council supports the resolution received from the City of Sarnia requesting the Government of Ontario to address the increasing problem of rental evictions. And further that this resolution be circulated to the City of Sarnia, the Honourable Doug Ford, Premier of Ontario, and the Honourable Ernie Hardiman, Oxford MPP.
Thank you. And discussion? Councillor Lauter? Sorry, councillor Lauter, I think you might have double clicked.
Sorry. I asked to bring this forward because properties are being sold and renters are evicted. New owners do some renovations, then lease for much higher rent. This is causing hardship for many, leading to mentally and financially issues. It defeats the purpose of affordable housing. So hopefully this will get to someone and not fall on deaf ears, because we do need help everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Okay, I think we're all in favour of that. So I'm not even sure if I need to ask for the vote, but we'll do it anyway, just out of procedure to keep the clerk happy here. So you've heard the motion. All those in favour? And carries unanimous. So next up, we have regarding the Heritage Designation Removal at 130 Finkel Street. That correspondence, looking for a mover and a second or? We'll go with councillor Talbot and a second or councillor Schattenberg?
Thank you, worship. I'll move that Woodstock City Council direct staff to commence required public consultation under Section 32 of the Ontario Heritage Act in order to consider removing the heritage interest designation at 130 Finkel Street. And further that city council direct staff to prepare a report presenting any comments received from the public and comments received from the Woodstock Heritage Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Discussion? We'll go with councillor Lauter?
Thank you. I wonder if we could have Ms. Houston speak to this resolution?
Yep, we sure can. Welcome.
Hello.
For manager, Karen Houston.
Yes. I would just like to say that this is a really special property. It is actually the oldest built heritage that we have in Woodstock. It was one of the first houses that was designated. However, about two years ago, the present owners actually allowed the Heritage Committee to have a look at the site. And so they got a really good look at what kind of condition it was in. My understanding is, yes, it's in even worse shape now. But the process through the Ontario Heritage Act states that the general public will have 30 days to actually have their input. It will be out in the paper, and the Heritage Committee will have to have their input as well. And this is a really important site, and it's, it's going to be difficult. We are aware that the owners themselves also got a notice from the city itself that property is in such bad shape. So this one's going to be tough.
Let's see. Thank you. And further questions? So councillor Talbot?
Thank you, worship. This is through to Karen Houston. Is this the old Levi White House? So Levi was the first settler in the City of Woodstock, and it's the one directly behind. I mean, people might have a hard time thinking of where it is, because it says Finkel Street, whereas it really faces onto Henry.
It basically predates the CN Railway. So the fact is, Finkel Street used to go straight beside their property. And then, of course, CN came in in 1853, and that kind of killed Finkel Street. So you've got the walkway that goes along, and that's the extension of Finkel Street. So yes, this is the, the property that's just off of Henry. And it was built in 1819. I mean, that's incredibly old. When you think about the fact we're away from any water, lakes, anything like that, to have a structure still being around. There's actually a great picture. I think it was Eleanor Garth House, who, there's a picture of her in 88 when they were, the Historical Society was trying to buy the house. They were desperate that they wanted to buy this house. And they just didn't have the money to do it. And so it went into private home, like private hands. And it basically, that was probably the last opportunity for it to be in public sort of domain. So, yeah. Yeah, it's a very important site.
I think if memory serves, and it depends on which history books, it's, it's not the oldest house in Woodstock, but it's the, the oldest remaining house in Woodstock. So there were many houses prior to that, but of course, now we have the YMCA and other things located on those properties.
You're exactly right. That is where the first one was supposed to have been built, was on the YMCA property. But yes, this is the, the last one that is remaining and is still standing. Absolutely true.
Yeah. And well, I know there's lots of interest in this, but we'll allow councillor Talbot to follow up first.
Thank you. I remember, we've been on the committee when designations were on, and I remember this property. But is there any portion of it that is salvageable, that maybe, you know, could be left as a monument or a tribute or as a reminder?
I believe that right now, the owners actually, and again, don't quote me on this, but I believe that they're actually have a study that might be in place, looking at what some of the options could be. But keep in mind that if it's as in poorer shape as what they're talking, that comes into play as well. The Act actually says that when the designation is taken off, that's sort of the end of it. However, seeing as the owners have been really, really good at working with the committee, I'm hoping that we can negotiate something of that kind of nature. That would be fantastic. But this is something that the Heritage Committee is really going to have to get their heads around, and where they would like this to go, or of commemoration, and what that would look like. But again, let's be clear that the Heritage Act itself does not state that there's anything that's in there that you have to do that. This would be the two sides working together.
This is almost like St. Mary's when it was taken down and trying to, I mean, it would be, because it is such an important part in our history, it would be nice if we were able to save something, or, you know, that it, just so that we always had that marker there, knowing that that's, that was one of the last, and the first, first and last.
And there are a number of different communities that have different ideas of how to commemorate and different things that could be done, but it would take cooperation with the owners. Yes.
I know that I saw a plan. It showed some of the aspects being able to be salvaged and repurposed or reconstructed if the property was redeveloped. But some of the original aspects of the home, of course, with, with all of the changes and additions and everything that took place over the years, there's maybe not as much left as what was originally built back in 1819, but definitely one for the history books, that's for sure. And so we'll go with councillor Petter next, and then councillor Schattenberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just from a hands-on approach, I had no idea where 130 Finkel Street was, so I went on a little adventure. You go from the Dundas down, and you all of a sudden run out of road, and you go, okay, well, it's not here. So you get on the other side, and you start going up that way more south, and you go, well, wrong numbers, let's go back the other way. So then you end up getting out of the car, and you walk up Finkel Lane. I didn't know where Finkel Lane was. I do now. And the numbers are starting to look familiar. They're getting close to 130. So then you look to the other side of the path that goes up to the pedestrian bridge, and you see a house way far away. You can't believe that. You can't believe that it it was ever addressed as Finkel Street. But I did, and I'm sure I committed all kinds of trespassing, but I did go back in there and I did look at the house. And trust me, it is in terrible, terrible condition. It's too bad. It's uh I didn't see anything. Now, I'm not a builder and I'm certainly not a restorer or anything like that. But it was in really, really bad shape. And I hope something could can be done to at least, you know, mark the fact that it was there. Uh but it, trust me, people are gonna be, I already saw some uh reaction on social media that, you know, save the save the house, heritage house. Trust me, if you can see it, you probably wouldn't want to say that. Uh the uh the homeless has gotten into it. I'm sure that that's that was a problem and whether they're still there, I don't know. But there are remnants all around the property that it's been some sort of a campground. And I just want people to understand that whatever happens to it, I mean, it it would be great if we could hold on to it. But it's in very, very poor shape. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Shattenberg.
Yeah, thanks. I'll just basically a comment. I think I think this Saturday and unfortunately, maybe the beginning to the end of that house happened probably around nineteen sixty, when those three or four brick bungalows were built in front of it. And that automatically put it to kind of in a hidden spot. And and there's a number of trees there. I hope most of them get preserved by whoever the developer is. And and one more, this isn't a warning, but maybe just a comment to the developer themselves. We just had a uh item on October twenty-first to Gendover on Mill Street, where they talked about the right of way and the easement to do with the railway and C N Rail uh is no longer sort of a grandfathered thing there. Because now the C N Rail is there as far as new construction would go on that site, about the distances and and uh everything from vibrations to the ground and all that stuff that have to be calculated to be able to build on that property. So I'm sure they'll do their due diligence when it comes time to uh uh redeveloping that property. And as others have said, hopefully save some of the of the house if possible.
Thank you. Further discussion? All right. Thank you. You've heard the motion. All those in favor. And carries unanimous. And we'll hear back more about that in the future. So next up we have uh our administrative reports and of course, the interim tax levy for twenty twenty-two. Uh let's go with uh councillor Accioni and a second or councillor Petter.
Oh yes, moved by myself, the Woodstock City Council approve the interim tax levy for twenty twenty-two and the necessary bylaw be approved.
Thank you. Discussion. Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor. And carries unanimous. Uh and then the temporary borrowing bylaw. And we'll go with councillor Petter and councillor Shattenberg.
Yes, I I move that uh Woodstock City Council authorizes the temporary borrowing to a maximum of five million dollars for the year two thousand twenty-two and that the necessary bylaw be approved.
Thank you. Discussion. Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor. And carries unanimous. And then the employee computer purchase program. And let's see, we'll go with councillor Shattenberg and a second on that one will be councillor Talbot.
Uh motion is that Woodstock City Council approve the employee purchase program for computers that incorporates the parameters included in the report.
Thank you. Discussion. Oh councillor Shattenberg.
Uh not sure who on the staff member would be able to comment on that, but uh I know this happens every two years or so. But what are sort of the other parameters in the in the report for this uh uh computer purchasing system with the employees of the city Woodstock?
Uh your worship through to the question, I can answer that. Um it is one program that we offer every two years. There's limitations on amounts. We have a minimum of five hundred dollars to be spent and a maximum of twenty-five hundred. The intent is really for educational purposes as opposed to um say, a gaming computer or entertainment. So we have quite a list of eligible and ineligible items in keeping with that uh theory. Uh employees are also asked to sign a promissory note. They get a loan from us with a relatively low interest rate and then they repay it as a payroll deduction.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor. And carries unanimous. And then next up we have the amendment for the parking restrictions. And we'll go with councillor Talbot and councillor Tate.
Thank you worship. I'll move that Woodstock City Council authorize the increase of on-street and short-term municipal parking lots from two hours to three hours until February third, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Discussion. Councillor Talbot.
Thank you worship. Um I had a B I A meeting this morning and parking was brought up. And I just wanted to say how much um the B I A and the members appreciate the extended parking that the city has um given us during the COVID period. Not a lot of people would remember, but at one time when we had parking meters and had them in our parking lots, I think our revenue um was well over a hundred thousand dollars every year. And that money was used to keep the parking lots um up to to par, like always refurbishing them. And um the money was always reinvested. So it was a good. But as you can see from the report, um what we take in right now as far as revenue um is a lot less than that. And I'm sure that does not um pay to maintain the lots and the parking. And because we've been helping out um with the extended timeframes, the revenue is even less. But it definitely makes a difference to the merchants downtown and anybody using the services. And I know at one time we um always had, um it was always questioned as to whether we had merchants parking on the street and taking up the the spaces that we, you know, we wanted for the people that were coming downtown. I don't think that is as big an issue as it used to be. But if you consider about, if you're going downtown and if you're parking, say, just once and you want to go from one end to the other for things that you're shopping for, two hours might not cut it all the time because especially if you're stopping along the way on stops that you hadn't planned. So we want to do everything that we can to encourage people to come to the downtown and um go to the stores that are open and um use them. So if the three hours assist in that, I think that's something that we should be providing.
Thank you. And uh further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor. And carries unanimous. And then next up is uh the creation of a reserve fund for park trees based on our most recent approval of the policy. Uh we'll go councillor Petter and councillor Accioni.
Yeah, I move that Woodstock City Council approves the creation of a reserve fund for park trees.
Thank you. Discussion. Councillor Petter.
Yeah, I was just wondering if, I don't know if uh Mr. Connors is on here or not, or maybe it's Rita. If somebody would like to give a a little uh explanation of this so the public can understand that uh we take our trees very seriously here in Woodstock.
Yes, uh your worship through to the councillor's question, I can answer that. And so this reserve fund would give us a place to put all of um the money that we bring in either through donation uh for to go back into park trees or street trees or through fines that may be laid through our newer bylaws. Um and sometimes through development, people uh developers aren't able to fit all the required trees in the properties. There would be cash and lube paid back to the city. And we've ensured that there were other locations within the city that those trees would be planted. Um we do this to make sure that we're increasing our tree canopy as a whole. We want to make sure that um we are doing our part to make sure we are a green city and protecting our forest canopy.
This one. Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Accioni.
Thank you worship and through to uh to Rita. Um if the public wanted a tree in front of their house, can they contact the city to have that if there is a a fund available or extra trees, let's say?
Of course. Um so through the city of Woodstock website, through Parks and Recreation, you can actually request a tree on our website. There's a form you can fill out. The other option is to call our office. Or you can email parks and recreation info at cityofwoodstock.ca. And we take all those requests in. We try to do two plantings a year, spring and fall, based on what species are selected. There's um spring and fall are the best times to plant and make sure that those trees survive. But we receive requests all the time. So if you're looking for a tree for your front boulevard on um city maintained property, then please contact us and and we can get something set up.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor. And carries unanimous. And uh next up we have the environmental consideration for sixteen Graham Street. We'll go with councillor Shattenberg and councillor Tate.
I motion that Woodstock City Council authorize an increase in the amount allotted for the necessary environmental assessments of the sixteen Graham Street property to sixty thousand dollars from an original amount approved at twenty-five thousand dollars to complete the necessary studies.
Thank you. Discussion. Councillor Shattenberg.
Yeah, from the mayor, I guess through Len Magier from our development office, uh just to clarify exactly where sixteen Graham Street is. I'm sure most people realize that it's more than just the uh the returning office for the last election that was that called. But give us ideas to sixteen Graham Street, the size of the property in the in the background on this uh environmental necessity.
Your worship through to councillor Shattenberg. Yes, so this is sixteen Graham Street. Most people probably know it as the former Woodstock P U C property, uh but there is quite a history going back on the property. So we have received the phase one environmental audit, uh which recommends going to a phase two, given the history of the property and some of the uses that have been there. So the cost is a lot more than we had originally uh projected at around twenty-five thousand dollars. But a lot of that is because of, again, because of the history of the property, they need to do a number of boreholes and some testing. So it's put the cost up. And in order to get the record site condition to be in a position to actually sell the property, uh we need to complete this phase two audit.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor. And carries unanimous. And next up we have the election coordinator position. We'll go councillor Talbot and councillor Lauder.
Thank you. I'll move that Woodstock City Council approve the hiring of a temporary election coordinator for twenty twenty-two. And further that the funds be drawn from the election reserve.
Thank you. Discussion. Councillor Talbot.
Thank you worship. I just want to say, I think this is a an excellent um idea. I had the privilege of being in charge of two provincial elections. I know the work that goes into them and um uh you need to have someone that can just focus on the election because there's a lot of work. A lot of people don't think it. But um it is a a big job. And it would be very hard um for our staff to take all that extra on um to do it.
Thank you. And uh they'll still be doing uh lots with the election even with this position. But uh it'll mean that they'll be able to continue along with a lot of their regular work as well. It's uh uh it is a very big process and very important for the city of Woodstock. So uh further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor. And carries unanimous. And our next one, we have the municipal code eight twenty-five noise bylaw exemption request. And we'll go with councillor Petter and councillor Talbot.
Yes, uh through the mayor, I would like to, gotta find it here. I move that Woodstock City Council does not approve the noise bylaw exemption for the Monarch Boulevard Alberni Road block party event to be held on November sixth, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. Discussion. Councillor Petter.
Yeah, I just wanted to uh got a few problems with this uh this request. The we had the uh, we had staff do a report on it and it doesn't seem like like the organizer needs this uh exemption. Uh it turned from a uh backyard party to a block party uh in between uh October when they first requested it. And it just doesn't seem that we need to uh to extend any hours because the uh block party application said it was going till ten o'clock. So I don't think uh I don't think this really needs to be approved. Uh I think the event's gonna happen. Uh it seems to be quite a few people for a block party in that area, but that's okay. It's already been approved. But I don't think we need to uh extend the uh noise bylaw.
Thank you. Uh councillor Talbot.
Thank you worship. I wanna want to thank staff for the report. Um it brought a a lot of things to um light uh uh reading it. And I have to agree with councillor Petter. Um the roadblock is only up until at ten o'clock, so I'm not sure why it needs to carry on further. And this would be one of the first times we have exempted um something for this type of um event. And it's um I have to agree with staff that events of this size might be better served being held at um say, the complex or somewhere where larger crowds are able to gather and where larger events do take place um rather than in a an actual neighborhood. So uh appreciate all the information that we received. It definitely does help us to make um a better decision.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councillor Accioni.
Thank you worship. Um yes, I agree with both uh councillors' comments as well. Uh a little bit of a precedent setting, I would fear if we did approve it just for this type of event, from what it's grown to, from what it was originally when we approved it to what it's gone to now. Uh I absolutely, it sounds like the uh diversity event's gonna be fantastic, all in favor of it. Don't get me wrong, it all plan on attending actually. And um just think for future organizations or groups that want to hold something like this, that maybe they do look at other facilities uh that are geared for the larger capacities and and everything else. But I certainly agree with counsel on this one, that uh this is not the time to exempt the the noise for the sake of the neighborhood. So thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Okay, I'll add a little part for me. I know my name's already on the flyer. I attended it in the past. And uh with the discussion that took place at our last council session, it was then brought to my attention uh from part of the organizers' uh comments that are made uh uh maybe aren't necessarily reflective of the the views of the friendly city, especially using those monikers. So I myself, uh I agree about the noise bylaw and I wish them well in their event, but I will not be attending. And uh so contrary to what's on the flyers, uh I will not be representing the city at that function. And uh with that, you've heard the motion. All those in favor. And carries unanimous. Uh next up, and uh I know there's uh a lot of uh families and people of all ages that are uh waiting patiently for this part of the agenda. So we are looking at uh the city of Woodstock, starting and taking over on short notice the Santa Claus parades. So we'll go with uh councillor Tate and uh councillor Lauder as a second or thank you.
Yeah, I'll move that Woodstock City Council direct staff include funds as in addition to base budget in order to add the Santa Claus parade to the list of special events operated by the city. And if um Mr. Danson could comment, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh thank you councillor uh Tate. Um yes, this all happened within probably the last five or six days. Uh it's been brought to our attention that uh a lot of other communities are ramping up and hoping to put something on short notice. I've orchestrated a couple of meetings and put together an ad hoc committee of civic-minded volunteers, uh real doers. And we're eager to move forward with council's uh blessing. It's not gonna be as big as previous play uh prays, obviously. But uh we're working hard to uh just generate some positivity and uh some Christmas spirit.
Thank you. Councillor Talbot.
Thank you worship through to um Brad. Thank you for uh being able to pull the strings as quickly as you have been. Um I I agree. I think the public needs something. And um who who doesn't need uh a Santa Claus parade? I think the public should be aware it won't be a nighttime parade. Is that correct?
Yes, absolutely, because they
Sorry, you cut it.
I said, yes. So so because of the I said, yes. So so because of the the short notice and and all the other uh uh details that would be required to orchestrate a nighttime parade, uh either organizing and uh getting the use of the fairgrounds and so on, it's going to be an afternoon parade.
And it we're looking, is it true? We're looking at a Sunday this year, not um a Saturday?
Correct. So we picked our class not to conflict with other area parades, uh not only with some of the participants that we're going to reach out to, but it will be Sunday, December twelfth at two P M. And we'll be utilizing at this point, we're planning on using the same parade route as the traditional nighttime parade. So uh fairgrounds, McKenzie Street, west onto Dundas, right down to Van Sitterdav to uh Van Out Park.
Fabulous. And um what is the or what has your ability been so far to secure some bands?
Uh we've had good response. That was one of our first uh kind of try to head before uh speaking to council. Uh we've reached out to vans that we traditionally had at both the Santa and the big parade day parades, reached out to uh the many Shriner groups. Uh and to this point, we're very pleased with the response we have. We continue to hopefully gain to uh gain some more activity and participation in that regard. But uh we have to understand that this is something that we feel is all the community wanted uh from the feedback we've received. So we're going to be relying heavily on community participation, the schools, the churches, organizations uh and such to uh because we need to put something between the bands. So we want everybody to come out and just rally around what Woodstock can do. So uh with the blessing of council, directly after this particular meeting, we are blitzing with our uh our our marketing strategy. So more people will become aware of it. And if there's any questions, they can certainly direct them to my office.
So the most important question? Were you able to secure Santa? I mean, that's pretty close to Christmas and he's a busy guy. So is he able to uh finish the parade as usual?
I cannot disclose that information.
And last question is um where would people um call if they would like to volunteer? I mean, because I think people really need to know that it takes a lot of bodies to pull this off. And I mean, that's when you have a year's notice. So trying to pull something together in six weeks takes a lot of um resources. And if there are people out there that could help, who who and where would they contact?
Worship through.
Sorry, you're you're not coming through, Brad.
Okay, can you hear me now? So all the information regarding volunteering and participating will be available immediately following this meeting uh with council's blessing, uh whether you want to participate, volunteer, all those components are together in our social media uh package that will uh will move out uh the media release to uh area uh newspapers, radio stations and the like, and certainly on the city webpage.
Thank you. Uh further questions at council? Counselor Lotter?
Thank you. Uh just to comment, I just uh on social media, of course, there's lots of uh people um asking for it and there's people that's saying no. So I just want to say that just for the citizens' information, the Santa Claus parade has always been run by the Santa Claus Parade Committee in conjunction with the B I A. And they have done a wonderful job. And with the parade committee dissolving earlier this year and the B I A stepping away, the city is taking this responsibility on, something that we have not had the responsibility to do before. Um and thanks to Brad and his ad ad hoc committee. I really look forward to the Santa Claus parade, and I think it's a a great positive thing for um all the people and the little ones that love to see Santa. So thank you, Brad, for taking this on.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Accioni?
Thank you, your worship. And through to Brad, thank you as well. Um it's no secret, Christmas uh parade has been while I was on that committee for eighteen years and the parade marshal for thirty some odd parades of Victoria Parade as well. But um very dear dear, I'm really glad to hear that. Thanks for stepping up and and like to thank the committee for running it all those years. I certainly know how much work it was. We literally took one month off and we were starting to plan the next parade again. So there's a lot of work to go ahead on that and certainly will help out any way uh I can personally. And as a counselor, certainly support it. So thanks, Brad, to the entire team and to the community of Woodstock. I know you're going to step up. I know you want to participate. Many of you reached out already. So stay tuned, you'll get the information. Um hopefully soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Schattenberg?
Yeah, I just wanted to uh through to Brad Jansen, uh the Lions Club of Woodstock to the long group of volunteers that you've got. We've already discussed this uh previously. They've assisted with marshaling, helping to close off Nellis Street, helping kids get to their floats and help getting the floats onto the track at uh the fairgrounds, et cetera, et cetera, and get the the parade on the road on time. And uh I we had a meeting on Tuesday night at Southgate Center and we talked about the possibilities of a parade still happening in the city of Woodstock. And and everyone's hand went up to sort of say, yeah, we're willing to do it. And we all look good with uh a purple for Lions Club, purple and gold, but also we look good with the orange vests on too. We're ready to work for you.
Thank you. Uh Counselor Tate?
Yeah, just a final comment. And I've always said, this is the only time we can recognize um staff publicly, but I got a text in the middle of this meeting while we were discussing this, so I have to pass it on. Um some of the wording I can't use, but God bless you, Brad Jansen. He really is a national treasure. So thank you, Brad, because as was mentioned, we don't usually do this. Um I know social media like to blame us, but it's nothing that we've ever done before. And thank you very much, Brad, for stepping up. As we know, the other um when the as um Counselor Accioni, they took eleven months and you've got about two weeks. So thank you very much.
And we'll let you respond to that, Mr. National Treasure. Oh, your mic, though.
There we go. I'm sorry about that. Uh I just want to make it clear, I'm just one person and uh it takes uh the Lions Club, the Rotarians, the volunteers. This is all about civic engagement. And I'm just going to steering the ship on behalf of those that want to enjoy something that belong overdue. And that's just to to gather, get people together and and enjoy the season and uh have something positive to talk about. We'll we'll make it happen, but we need a lot of help. So I'm happy that uh we've got a lot of civic-minded uh uh people in our community to to make this happen.
And I I think that'll be the the first order of business when you get the messages out and start doing that campaign. You're going to be uh busy juggling uh an ever-expanding newly formed committee. So a lot of individuals that are going to be coming. And of course, many hands make light work. But uh you've uh got uh a lot of work coming up in the next little bit and uh make sure you uh keep Counselor Talbot happy. There better be that uh guy in the big red suit with the beard. Uh I'm not sure how you look in a beard, but uh other than the goatee, so I know that I don't have quite enough white hair yet to do it myself. Anyway, further discussion of council? Okay, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries approved unanimously. And uh of course, there's always reason to celebrate today's Diwali uh for people who are celebrating the Festival of Light and they're very happy that council had already approved uh the uh limited use and safe use of fireworks for their festival. And uh we're we're still having uh our special events. Uh Mr. Brad Jansen and team uh organizing this Santa Claus parade on short notice. And next up, uh we need to look at giving early permissions for twenty twenty-two fireworks. And it seems like it was just a month ago, we had fireworks to recognize our our frontline employees. So uh we'll go with Counselor Petter and Counselor Accioni.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that Woodstock City Council pre-approved ten thousand dollars in the two thousand twenty-two revenue fund budget for Canada Day fireworks.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. Make sure you call the fireworks company. I understand they're in short supply and logistics, and that's why we're doing this a little early. So thank you for your efforts on that as well. And with that, we'll move along to bylaws. Uh Counselor Lotter?
Thank you. Um I move by myself and second by Counselor Accioni that the following bylaws be given first and second reading. Nine four nine nine dash twenty-one, a bylaw to repeal the city of Woodstock bylaw number ninety-four ninety-four dash twenty-one. A bylaw to amend zoning bylaw eighty-six twenty-six dash ten as amended. Nine five zero zero dash twenty-one, a bylaw to provide for an interim tax levy. Nine five oh one dash twenty-one, a bylaw to authorize the borrowing of five million dollars. Nine five oh two dash twenty-one, a bylaw to amend the city of Woodstock Municipal Chapter ninety-three clerk deputy appointment.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. Uh Counselor Lotter?
Move by myself and second by Counselor Schattenberg, that the following bylaws be given a third and final reading. Ninety-four ninety-nine dash twenty-one through ninety-five oh two dash twenty-one.
Thank you. You've heard the motion, all those in favor? Carries unanimous. And today we will start with, uh let's see, we'll go Counselor Talbot.
That was first last time.
Oh, okay, that's right. I was trying to remember back. I was referring to my notes. I must have flipped back too far. Then let's start. We'll go alphabetical. How's that? We'll go Counselor Accioni this time. There we go.
All right. Thank you, worship. Got uh definitely a few things. I want to congratulate all the businesses uh nominated and of course that won for the uh last night's Chamber Awards. Um also want to then I mentioned the uh municipal campaign school. It's going to be held on Wednesday, November tenth. It's a virtual meeting at seven P M. Well, um if interested in in the upcoming elections, it's going to be some great information there. Of course, Santa Claus Parade has been announced now to Sunday, December twelfth, two P M. Please mark your calendars. And uh I hope you can participate. Uh and of course, um we got Remembrance Day coming up on November eleventh at the Senataf. I hope to see as many people there as possible. Um I just ask that you kind of take your make space for yourself and wear a mask if possible. Uh but I am happy to hear they're going to have a a live event this year. So um be safe, everyone, and stay warm. The furnace is now been turned on with the snow the other day, so my wife is happy. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Now, let's see, uh how's my alphabet doing? We'll go Counselor Lotter next.
Thank you. Um I did watch the Chamber Business Award La Excellence last evening and congratulation to all the winners and also to all those who were nominated. It was uh great to see those um people that were nominated. And it was a different way to see see the awards, but at least it was take, they did it and it turned out fine. I'm pleased to announce that the Woodstock Art Gallery is a shortlisted nominee for a prestigious arts education award presented by Ontario Galleries, the Provincial Wide Association of Public Art Galleries. This important achievement is a recognition of the inaugural New Impressions High School juried exhibition at our gallery. The awards will be presented on November twenty-ninth. For more information about this amazing virtual program, please visit the gallery's website. Congratulations to Stephanie Porter and Deanna Logan, and I wish you well on November twenty-ninth. Thank you.
Thank you. And uh the gallery will be undergoing the uh work to their HVAC and mechanical system. So uh for all the citizens, uh get out and you can go into the gallery in person now because there will be a little bit of a break and it'll be the virtual until uh the part in the new year. So uh let's see. So next up, we go with Counselor Petter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Never does my last name usually get me in the top half of a alphabetical deal. But anyway, uh because of enormous pressure put on me by the mayor, uh I finally have some sports to report on. Uh not this past weekend, but the weekend before, we sent four teams into St. Thomas for a tournament that first time in almost two years that uh we've been, that we've sent teams out of town to go to a tournament and two of the four won gold. The under eleven and the under fifteen uh boys. So congratulations to them. I would also uh like to put a little plug in for the Navy Vets, too. The big boys, they are first place in the Doherty Division of the uh Provincial Junior Hockey League. Uh I was going to announce that uh their next home game, but it's not till next Friday after this. They are in uh, I believe they're in Tavistock. I could be wrong, but I think it's Tavistock tomorrow night. Bet you Schattenberg knows, don't you, Mark? Uh and anyway, did a little plug in for them. They have not lost the regular game. They did drop a couple in overtime, but they're still in number one. They've got seven victories. So looks good on uh Woodstock to have those guys playing so well. And that's all I got. There you go, Mayor. I did it.
Thank you. And I'll I'll add just a little. So the uh recreation study with all of the responses back from the community, the individuals and the groups, the surveys, uh the draft is available on the city website for review and uh additional commenting. And uh uh we'll be discussing some of those matters when we get into the uh long-term capital planning. And uh so let's see, next up would be Counselor Schattenberg.
I've got the uh Woodstock Navy Vet schedule loading on my computer screen. We'll see if it if it'll come up in time here. Couple of things I want to mention. It's been mentioned a couple of times here that the Lions Club of Woodstock Bingo Returns. It's every Thursday starting on the eighteenth, so it's not tonight, not the eleventh, not Remembrance Day, but the but the eighteenth. Uh seven P M is when the numbers start getting called, but by all means, the doors are certainly opening at the Southgate Center well before that. Here's the key, though. Due to COVID, for now anyway, uh only sixty players are allowed to be there, plus, of course, the volunteers, but sixty players. And we want you to register in advance. The one phone number you can dial is five one nine two nine zero fourteen fourteen. Like I say, only sixty players can uh can register for for bingo at at Southgate Center. The other thing I wanted to mention, we were of course talking about the the Dr. Perry House earlier. And when I was doing that, looking at some of the older buildings in Woodstock, I looked back to eighteen thirty-four and the old St. Paul's church when I was reading some of the stuff I've got locally. And I just want to give a plug out to their online Christmas auction. They've got over two hundred um items on their Christmas auction this year for old St. Paul's. Of course, the church was built in eighteen thirty-four by uh Captain Drew, I would believe it was at that point in time. So the money's going to the church, but of course, also going to the inn, which has been one of our popular points of discussion as of lately. And to find the auction, it's old St. Paul, so old S T Pauls uh dot com. And let's see if I the schedule's up yet. No, it's not up yet on my computer, but the for the Woodstock Navy. So anyway, I'll pass it along to the next person.
Very good job. Next time, I'm sure uh Counselor Petter will have the schedule up. Also, uh the curling club updates were were lacking. I think Team Duncan has been doing very well out in Alberta, doing the the curling, representing the friendly city. And they they will be in the playoffs for B Division. Uh so uh those young ladies are doing very well in the curling as well.
Um you are impressing me, Mr. Mayor. I am so impressed right now.
I've spent time at the Curling Club in the past, but it hasn't been as much time on the ice as as just visiting with people. But uh we'll we'll continue right along. So uh next up will be Counselor Tate.
Yeah, I have a few comments. There's been lots going on around, as we're well aware. First off, um I'd like to just comment on the local six thirty-six did a protest today, rally protest in um the museum square. Um I would like to thank them for um doing something. They brought, I think they said about seventy-five people downtown. And it wasn't like a a negative. I don't want people to look at it as a negative. They have a difference of opinion of us, which is fair. And that's why we live in a democracy where you can have a difference in opinion, but instead of just saying something nasty nasty on social media, they went out and did something. And if it brings people in our downtown, I think that's good. I think that's a positive um because we need more people down there. So I congratulate them for actually doing something and believing in what they what they had to say. Not that I agree, but I think it was, I think it's good. Um the other comment was, we've had a lot of comments, emails, hmm, both back and forth, had a lot of very actually probably more positive. But one thing that's very clear, and I've always found this on council, people don't understand the city responsibility and the county responsibility. And the county responsibility is the social programs, the buildings, et cetera. City council got a lot of criticism. It's not up to city council. We have three city county councillors that sit represent, but the rest of city council got some flack that they didn't deserve. And for the public's awareness, it takes a lot of work to get buildings going, programs. We have fantastic staff. As I've always said, they have been working tirelessly behind the scenes, working on something. A lot of research, a lot, um, seeing what other municipalities are doing, what is working, talking to our partners. The county C A O has been very involved too, and we're working together. I will be bringing a motion to the next county councillor in relationship to a shelter. But just so everybody is aware, couldn't do it without my other county councillors on the Woodstock. Um, council, our C A O, David Querry, the clerk, Amy Humphreys, and the county C A O, um, Michael Dubin. But it is, it is a big, long process. It's not an easy fit fix. So I just want to thank everybody. Not that everybody watches us because they seem to not understand what the process is, but city council got a lot of criticism they shouldn't have got. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. And uh, some of the, the press that did come out of that, unfortunately, uh, uh, things weren't communicated about the spheres of jurisdiction and individuals that were interviewed didn't seem to uh, add any benefit to the misconceptions of who does what here. We are a little unique in the province. And of course, uh, uh, we have some great agencies that come alongside the county as well, such as Oxford Community Health. They have a lot of programs, a lot of funding. And uh, I know as well as our Canadian Mental Health Agency. So combined between the county and Oxford Community Health and C M H A, I think a lot of these individuals that are really starting to take notice on uh, some of the poverty issues, the mental health, the addiction issues and transient and homelessness concerns. Uh, it's time to roll up your sleeves and see where you can help out with those that have the resources. Of course, here with the city, uh, we're uh, all about transit and police and ice rinks and uh, marriage licenses. And uh, we don't have the expertise in the form of these outreach social workers and mental health practitioners and all of that added funding that comes through from the province. So I want to again, uh, echo what councillor Tate said about the, the attention that's been given by some of our local people here today at uh, our museum. And uh, I encourage them all to become part of that solution. And I know that United Way Oxford also has uh, been having dialogue over the past few years. And they have their bridges to poverty event coming up and individuals can learn more there. And uh, hopefully, uh, as a community, we can work together to, to find those more permanent solutions. So uh, let's see councillor Talbot, you didn't want to be first. And uh, here we are.
It's good to be last because everybody has said everything that's important. So just want to say happy Diwali. Remind residents tonight that you might see a lot of fireworks going off. And um, enjoy them. They do have permission to do that today. So um, I imagine we'll see lots of uh, the sky being lit up. And um, Remembrance Day next Thursday, just remember to thank a veteran. Um, there aren't many left from the Second World War, but um, so important to remember and all those who have fought since. So um, even though social distancing um, is still a requirement, um, there's lots of room down at the Senate top. We can uh, circle it and hopefully the sound system will be loud enough that everyone can hear. But um, it's always good to um, see people out on that day. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, and uh, councillor Lotter?
Thank you. Um, I just had an email come in. And so this is kind of what, what you're talking about too. Uh, about uh, the, the, who is responsible for what. And so uh, this person is uh, the city uh, had to make changes to this intersection to accommodate trucks turning right from Norwich onto Juliana because the added left-hand turning lane on Juliana impeded their ability to turn the corner. There needs to be a no right-hand turn on red for the trucks on Norwich added. If the trucks turn on the red, they encroach into the oncoming left-hand turn traffic and a catastrophic accident is imminent. So I just, it just came in. And so I just thought I'd pass it on and county councillors want to speak to the uh, engineers at the county and pass that message on. And I can pass it on too. But um, that is one of the areas again that we aren't, weren't responsible for that. Thank you.
Thank you. And uh, I want to thank the team at the city when we had the uh, series of articles on who does what and what's on Woodstock Magazine. I believe those began back in May. We had them in June, July, August and et cetera. Um, but anytime uh, people who tune into this are, are having conversations with their friends and neighbors or overhear things at the coffee shop. Uh, just remind people that uh, there's uh, various aspects of the city that are uh, of course, our responsibility here on council and some that are the responsibility of our uh, county council and others that are the responsibility of uh, the agencies that have been assigned that from the uh, senior levels of government. So um, as a community, we can all help grow together and learn. And especially when we share correct information, that uh, is one of the most important aspects. And of course, I see all of our councillors are wearing poppies today. My frame in the picture, it's a little low, but I'm, I'm wearing mine as well. And uh, of course, make sure you uh, say thank you to a veteran, to active service personnel and uh, all of those uh, that deserve that recognition and not just on September eleventh. And I know I've heard uh, in the past, a few people who um, have been unsure how much money they should donate into the poppy box when they grab their first or second or third or fourth replacement poppy during the time leading up to Remembrance Day. And of course, the official position of the Legion of Canada that uh, runs the poppy campaign is that they would like to see everybody wearing a poppy. So the donation is a free will offering. If you don't have money, just wear a poppy, show the respect. And any amount you give, it all goes to help uh, veterans and uh, families of those veterans and service personnel. So uh, uh, want to thank all of council for uh, their closing comments. And I'll correct councillor Talbot. Uh, when it gets to me, that's when it's the hardest because everything has been covered. So with that, I would uh, wish everyone well and we'll see you after Remembrance Day for our next city council meeting. And I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Uh, councillor Petter and a seconder councillor Atchioni, all those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.